Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to order today, April 28th, at 7:42 PM. Do we have the roll call, please?
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mrs. Caljean, present. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
No.
It's reporting, but there's no TA. The OT unplugged.
We have one resolution for executive session?
Resolution 2014-093. Resolution authorized an executive session at the April 28, 2014, meeting of the Board of Trustees.
We have one matter to discuss in executive session, which is the asbestos statement contract, Village Hall. Moved by trustee Cullen.
Say again.
Seconded by trustee Clark. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Back at eight. Thank you. You're on, Alex. You're on. All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Do we have the roll, please?
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present.
Please rise to the plate allegiance.
There it is.
And pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, a couple announcements to get started. First, just on behalf of myself and the Board and the other trustees that were at the Holocaust Remembrance Service yesterday, I think we also want to thank the South Orange Maplewood Interfaith Holocaust Remembrance Ceremony Committee and Temple Sharet Tefill of Israel for hosting the event. We were actually talking earlier about what a sort of moving and remarkable event it was again this year. So I just want to make sure to thank the folks who helped put that together. It was very moving. And just if anybody, there was a video floating around, you know, the Internet today that was a clip of in Israel, the entire country sort of takes a moment of silence on National, on the Holocaust Remembrance Day. And people in city streets, walking down the streets, stop walking, people driving on highways, literally stop in the middle of the highway, get out of their car, and observe a moment of silence. And the entire country basically stops. So if you're at home and you're sitting seeing something else that's very moving about that, it's definitely a video worth checking out. A couple reminders. Container Day, 8:00 AM to 1:45 PM on the following Saturdays. We just had the first one this weekend, May 17th, June 21st, June 26th, August 23rd, September 27th at DBW. The South Orange Village Center Alliance is attempting to continue their work about making our downtown a great place to live and work and shop and visit. And so the Village Center Alliance is surveying residents to ask what kind of stores, restaurants, businesses should be recruited and what other kind of changes would appeal to folks who live in town. So I think the survey is now up online. I know last meeting it had not been put up online yet, and that is at sovillagessurvey.com. The next is a reminder about the pedestrian safety campaign. The Public Safety Committee in partnership with the Police Department has launched an educational campaign about pedestrian safety throughout the community. So we want to remind people that as a motorist, you're required to stop for pedestrians in the crosswalks, and pedestrians are only given the right of way at the mark crosswalks. Motors who fail to stop can be penalized two points on their license, a $200 fine, and 15 days of community service. Pedestrians who fail to yield to traffic when they're not in the crosswalk can be fined $54. So they're going to be aggressively enforcing that, and we hope people do pay attention and take care of. An effort is underway to reestablish First Night for New Year's this year after a two-year hiatus. This has always been, except for these past two years, an inexpensive, family-friendly way for Maplewood and South Orange residents to come out and celebrate the new year, and it was completely run and coordinated, organized by volunteers. So we're looking for people that have any skills in event planning or any other skills that might be able to contribute to the event to come and get involved. And if you are interested in doing that, I think we have the link on our website, and there's also a website, somfirstnight.wiiboo.com. A reminder about the baseball and softball parade, which is this Saturday, May 3rd. This year's parade will depart from New Waterlands Park at 9:00 AM and follow up Third Street down to Cameron Field. Myself and Mayor DeLuca from Maplewood will be throwing out the first pitch. That is always entertaining. And I haven't practiced yet this year, but I've got one week. So people are certainly welcome, encouraged to come out and attend. It should be a great event, as it always is. The Two-Town Triathlon for Kids. South Orange will host the Two-Town Triathlon for Kids on Saturday, June 14th, beginning at 8:00 AM. This is sponsored by both the South Orange and Maplewood Departments of Recreation, the South Mountain YMCA, and Atlantic Health. Children ages seven to 14 will swim laps at the South Orange Pool, bike through Meadowland Park in the West Montrose neighborhood, and run around the duck pond, ending the race at the footbridge adjacent to the pool. If you would like to find any more information about that, you can visit the Barrett's website or contact them. We are happy to have our hosts here tonight, who are going to give an annual update. An executive director for SOPAC, Mark Packer, welcome. Thank you for being here. Thank you for hosting us. Turn it over to you.
Good evening, President Torpey, distinguished village trustees. First, I want to just apologize for the noise next door. These are the kind of problems you'd like to have. We have a dance company next door. We have Seton Hall University downstairs on the main stage. I am Mark Packer, the executive director of the South Orange Performing Arts Center, and on behalf of SOPAC staff and Board of Governors, it is my pleasure to appear before you this evening to provide you with an update on the status of our organization. A little over a year ago, I was hired by the governors of SOPAC to elevate the standards of this organization, diversify programming, and ensure it met or exceeded the expectations for artistic excellence demanded of this community, that it improved the center's financial position and sense of fiscal responsibility, and helped the organization realize its potential as a cultural icon for the region and as an economic driver for the downtown district. And I'm here tonight to describe the progress we've made in achieving these goals. This has been a year marked by positive growth and change. Most significantly, this change has been evidenced in the expansion of our presenting season, which has grown from 41 main stage performances in 2013 to 66 in 2014. With blues and jazz in the loft, Seton Hall University performances, main stage and loft rentals, as well as other programming, SOPAC will have been open for more than 128 nights this year. This, of course, translates into a boon for local businesses, especially restaurants in the downtown district, and for retail establishments as well. The programming we have presented this year has been far more eclectic and has included a higher caliber of artistry than the center has been able to present in the past. Some notable data to share with you. Paid attendance year-to-date is 17,364. This reflects a 64% increase over last year. Revenue from ticket sales this year is over $712,000 compared to $370,000 in all of 2013. So far this season, over 6,200 new patrons have attended SOPAC events in theater. Those are people who have never been through our doors before and may never have been to South Orange before. Our email list has grown from roughly 12,000 last year to more than 18,000 this year, a 50% increase. Our Facebook likes have also grown significantly, from 3,000 last year to 5,000 in the current season, and over 1,000 people are now following us on Twitter. We also have a very high open rate for our patron emails of 25%. This is a statistic that I'm particularly interested in. Where once SOPAC drew a hyper-local audience to its theater, now audiences are coming from 15 counties, from New York and from Pennsylvania, and those coming from outside Essex County account for 43% of our attendees. SOPAC has truly become a cultural destination. Additionally, our education program that brings school students from around the region for matinee performances grew by a staggering 90%, serving over 5,800 students from 65 schools, many from economically distressed communities. And these programs were offered largely on a fee-for-service basis, which yielded a $12,000 surplus to SOPAC this year. For many of these children, it was their first, their only exposure to live performance and interaction with professional artists. On the contributed revenue front, SOPAC has so far raised $70,000 in new money from the New Jersey State Council on the Arts, the Geraldine R. Dodge Foundation, the Hayden Watson Foundation, and Bank of America, with more expected before the end of our fiscal year. This, in addition to other renewing institutional and individual support, will help us exceed our goals for contributed revenue this year. The Board of Governors has also changed significantly, adding nine people in the last 14 months, bringing the board to a total of 21 participants. It is a highly engaged group committed to supporting the institution and seeing it reach its full potential. Other changes this year have involved the departure of three long-serving staff members, Scott Sullivan, Ryan Isaacs, and Josh Newman. Their service to the organization will always be remembered with gratitude and appreciation. New hires and staff promotions have enabled SOPAC to achieve a seamless transition, and there is a strong esprit de corps among the current staff who have performed superbly in a greatly expanded year, but without additional support or capacity. As we approach the end of our season, the organization will be revisiting its strategic plan. Because of my arrival this past year and the addition of new governors and staff, the organization will be engaging in a process to revise our plan, which was developed in 2012, to better reflect the new realities and the needs of the organization, while also incorporating my vision for the organization and the aspirations of the full board, the staff, and other stakeholders. At the end of this summer, we look forward to the return of Playing Around South Orange, our outdoor painted piano project designed to encourage spontaneous music around the village, which will coincide with the arrival of Seton Hall University students and families. For the 2014-15 season, SOPAC will continue to present highly diverse programming, with the addition of some world music as well as some R&B. Our efforts to build out educational programming in the schools will renew as we seek the right strategic partners to engage with in establishing residencies in South Orange, in Maplewood, and beyond. We will continue to move towards fiscal stability through careful management of expenditures and the continued growth of both earned and contributed revenue. And while SOPAC is moving in a positive direction with respect to its finances, organizational stability and growth will take time to achieve. Our goal is not to just have a positive balance sheet, but to build sufficient cash reserves to weather the vagaries of turbulent economic times. Many of our grant proposals and major gift solicitations in the coming years will focus on this need. And of course, we're deeply grateful to the village for its support of SOPAC. Not just through the subsidy you provide to us or the restructuring of our debt, but through the guidance and support you consistently provide to my staff and to our board. I'm particularly grateful to our village liaison trustee Schnall, who has been just terrific in his efforts to be of assistance to both the organization and to me personally. Thank you, Steve. And finally, we are so appreciative for the outpouring of positive feedback we've received from the community about our new direction. It's truly gratifying to hear, and frankly, we never get tired of hearing it, that people in South Orange appreciate our work, are enjoying the performances, and recognize the myriad benefits of having a great cultural institution in your own backyard. Please keep spreading the word and buying the tickets. Thank you very much. Have an entertaining weekend.
Thank you for coming and for talking to us and giving us that very thorough and eloquent update. I will say a comment and then just a quick question, and I'm sure maybe some other board members have questions as well. One is, the comment is that from residents that I talk to around town on a regular basis, the feedback has not only been positive about SOPAC, but has been growing. And people I talk to seem to be going to more shows, even just in conversations not about SOPAC, but just, hey, what are you doing tonight? More people are saying, I'm going to a show at SOPAC, and that's really cool to hear. I had actually a friend from college who doesn't live in South Orange but lives elsewhere in New Jersey. Say, hey, I'm in South Orange tonight. I'm at a show in SOPAC. And it's really exciting to hear about people coming outside of town, and you kind of love when universities start colliding, and it's great that SOPAC can be that bridge for a lot of people. And one question that, just out of curiosity, as far as the people who come to the shows here and where they are hailing from, I know you guys collect, you've been collecting that information for a long time. Is there, would there be any interest or is there any value to kind of measuring that? So as far as looking at and visualizing it? So like, I'm kind of imagining a map of like New Jersey or the tri-state area, and you know, over different months or different years, kind of showing, you know, like almost like dots on a map of like where that's, like, is that growing? Like, that might be kind of an interesting trend to be able to see how it's growing. And are there, I'm kind of curious, you know, are there specific areas in New Jersey where our influence happens to be greater? Are there particular counties where more people are somehow hearing about SOPAC, or is it kind of dispersed evenly throughout the region, you know, as you get farther away?
Right. I think what we're seeing is that the counties that are contiguous are drawing the largest audiences. So, you know, we're getting a fairly large number of people who are coming from Morris County, from Union. You know, most of the northern counties are clearly where we're going to draw the largest audience. There's an industry standard that suggests that almost 90% of audiences who attend performing arts centers come from within 30 miles. And so that's probably the vast majority of people who are attending currently. But it was just so staggering for me to look at a statistic that said that 43% of our audience was coming from outside of this county. You know, I had heard that in previous years, this was a hyper-local audience that was largely South Orange, Maplewood. But now, for some shows, we're actually being outstripped by Montclair. We're having people who are coming from a number of communities surrounding us, Milburn, from Short Hills. And that number is growing dramatically. But it's very heartening to me that this center is not just serving the people who, it's critically important for us to serve the people locally, but that we actually are this cultural destination, so that where people from outside are coming here, and they're not just buying a ticket to SOPAC. You know, the data suggests that people spend, on average, at least $29 in other activity other than attending an event when they come to a cultural performance or museum. And so when you multiply that by 40,000 people over the course of the year, that's a tremendous number. It's in excess of a million dollars of economic benefit to the community. So that's very exciting, and I think that's just going to continue to grow.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Just one question, Mark. By the way, great job and great hearing all the positive improvements. Do you have a, like a write-up of all those numbers that you gave in the beginning?
Yes, you do.
So we could make that public and all that?
Absolutely, yeah. I have a photocopier next door.
Mine's pretty quick. With respect to, one of my current concerns is the parking challenges in our downtown right now. We have a lot of really cool developments coming online. We have new restaurants and everything interested in being in this amazing community. I know that SOPAC probably also faces that exact same challenge. Is there a way to track from these people, particularly those that are coming from outside of the county? Are they taking trains in? Are they using alternative transportation? Is something that's keeping them away, the parking challenges here? It would be awesome if we could have a better indicator of how many of these people are taking advantage of our train station versus trying to drive in and park in the downtown, and what that experience is like for them.
Trustee Cullen, as you know, I, when I came to SOPAC, I promised that I would try and create a culture of assessment here. We've been doing that with surveying, and I would be very happy to make sure that we have enough questions to address that specifically, so that we have a better understanding of what the impact is on attendance. My, sort of my intuitive response is the following, that because most of the the New York commuter traffic has gone, parking has gone by in the evening, it's not having a deleterious impact for our evening shows. Where we're most concerned currently that there is a problem is with loft rentals during the day, during the weekdays in particular. That's clearly where there's going to be the most challenge for us. But we don't have the empirical data yet, and it's something that I promise you I'll make a commitment to, ensuring that we collect that data in a more sophisticated manner for the coming year.
That would be great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just add to trustee Rosner's point. There used to be quarterly reports that were kind of in a PowerPoint. You don't have to replicate that, but there's a spot on the village website where each quarter, there was an update from SOPAC that showed the facts and figures and kind of the new developments, et cetera. And that would be great, so we could just point the community there if they have questions.
Sure. I thought we would be constrained tonight by our space, which is why I elected not to do the PowerPoint, against the better advice of Linda on replay. But going forward, I'll be happy to do that, and I'll also be happy to make sure that there's sufficient copies of the presentation so that the data can be posted online.
Great.
And if you send us anything electronically, you know, we'll post it on our website as well.
Sure. Thank you again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open the meeting up to public comment. I don't have a big, a pretty small room here, so. Does any member of the public wish to comment?
Just to listen.
Please come forward. Just state your name and address, please.
Dr. Robert Chandros, 108 West Montrose Avenue. I have three things I want to mention tonight. First of all, I want to commend trustee Cullen for the job on the gaslights. I'm very pleased to see that we have found that almost a quarter of the gaslights have problems, that in fact, they need to be serviced, and I only hope that this effort to repair them will be followed up continuously by public service. Secondly, I'd like to make a request that if possible, there be some kind of official or semi-official statement of the facts with regard to the animal shelter. As a supporter of that institution and an animal lover, I've been very frustrated seeing, reading about what's going on without having a clear picture as to what's official, what's not official, what's clear and what's not clear. So if there's any way you can do that, I think there are a lot of us in South Orange who really appreciate it. Thirdly, and a less laudatory thing, concerns the recent Donald Sterling-type events in South Orange. I am absolutely shocked and horrified at the comments made by the village president, the trustee Levison, in which he used what I think extremely offensive language in a tone of voice insulting him because he didn't like Mr. Levison spelling out the truth. I also am very upset about the way in which you dragged in members of the public into your vilification. Many of us use Maplewood Online to get information. We refuse to use Twitter. We are not one of your Facebook pals, so we really have no other place to get information. And when it comes out that you use this kind of tone of voice toward members of the public who are older, longer residents, and far more educated than you, it is just a disgrace. You were not elected to be the mayor of this town. You will never be elected to be the mayor of this town, and I think it's time you understood what your place in this town is. I think you owe an apology to trustee Levison, a public apology to Mr. Goldberg, and to the members of the public who you vilified in your comments. And I urge that the six members of this board insist that you do so publicly. They may sit back and accept your insults. I, for one, do not. And I think your statements and your behavior in this regard has been totally outrageous. With regard to Bitcoins, you may not be aware of it, but the way you have proposed this despite its opposition, there's no benefit to the person who uses it, who does so through a transmitter who goes broke. Should that happen, he'd be stuck, and the village would get sued, along with the person who tried to pay their taxes that way. That idea was turned down, let it die. No one wants it. Contrary to what you said, I don't believe there's one person in this town who really wants it, and I would challenge you to identify how many people are in that category and who they are.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes a comment? Okay. At this time, I'd like to close public comments. Regarding the JAC, I don't know, Mr. Roth or Mr. Lerner, if there is anything that you do want to say publicly tonight, or if we just want to direct people to the statements that are...
Well, I can say publicly, sure. But I'm sure that somewhere, somewhere along the way, that the administration can make facts known to the public should. Right now, and once again, I am not directly involved in this matter. This case is being handled by other council and Mr. Lerner, but what I think can happen is that as the litigation gets resolved, and right now, obviously, in the midst of litigation, it's very difficult to state facts for the record, but I think as that gets resolved, the administration can and should make facts known to the public. I believe that the reports that have been received from the state have been put online, and I think as such other documents are prepared, they can likewise be put online.
You want to add to that, Adam?
Currently, the JAC is closed under quarantine by our local health department. This was done after an inspection on March 12th, following a joint inspection with our local health department, as well as the state board of health department. Currently, it's under investigation. This report is not online, but can be opened, if you'd like. I think it's out there, pretty much. There is a separate investigation taking place with the New Jersey SPCA. Unfortunately, it is under investigation, and their details are kept separate and private until the investigation comes to conclusion. But as we move forward, we will try to update the community as best we can.
Was I mistaken that the state's report is not on our website?
It's not on our website. It is out in the community, though.
If it's out there, I think we should put it on our website.
Okay, we can do that. And as far as the other comments that were made, I've got no problem saying here that trustee Levison and I did speak and did apologize. So I think you'll read about that in the new record on Thursday. And I will also mention that for people who are interested in learning more about what's going on in town, there are actually a ton of resources where you can find information other than my personal Facebook and Twitter. So for example, we do post a lot of information on our website, it's southorange.org. It's not the greatest-looking website, and we are working on a new one, but there is actually a lot of information there. So we definitely encourage people to visit the website, and the meeting features section is updated pretty regularly. I would also make sure that people do know about the village's Facebook page and the village's Twitter account. Those are official accounts of the village, and they do put out, most of the Twitter link to the website, and there's plenty of information that we share on Facebook as well. We also would encourage that people look at the videos and minutes of these meetings as a way to learn about what the board has done during these meetings. We also started doing summaries of the meetings, so that we don't have to wait for the minutes to be approved, which usually takes two weeks until the next meeting. And that any action that was taken in the meeting, we can post on the website the next day, so that if there's any residents who are interested in seeing what actions were taken or what topics were discussed, they can immediately go online and do that. We've also discussed expanding the number of issues of the gaslight that we put out to the community, so we've always found that to be a pretty good resource. And so there's some kind of budgetary and content questions, but that's a discussion that we've been having. And we've discussed also starting a, and will be soon starting, a monthly email newsletter as well, so that residents who are interested in getting email updates about what's going on in town, and different events and important announcements, and the announcements, for example, that we talk about during these meetings, they can also sign up for that email list. And since trustee Schnell has taken over as chair of the Public Information and Marketing Committee, we've opened up a whole lot of other conversations about ways to get citizens' engagement involved, including finally, I think we're getting close to launching an online citizen engagement platform that would allow for a place where residents can really come together and discuss, and that there is some verification of who people are and what information they put out there, and that it's a place where productivity and constructiveness is encouraged, and a place where we can officially put out information and allow people to talk about it. And so there's a handful of other ways that we're discussing trying to get information out to the community, but at the end of the day, if people do have suggestions about how they do want to get information, we are very much open to that. You can contact any of us, you can come to the meetings and speak, as people sometimes do, and if you want to send a generic comment to the town and don't really know who to address it to, we did start using an info@southorange.org email address, so you can use that. On the other kind of flip side of it, if people are interested in submitting complaints or service requests, which are maybe not a majority, but a good percentage of the emails that usually all of us do get, you can also use our new SO Connect application that's powered by Public Stuff. So you can go to the website at southorange.org/thruonone, and you can use the interface there to submit a service request, from anything from light speeding out to code enforcement issues to noise complaints. You can also download that for your Android or iPhone. Just search SO Connect, one word, from either of those stores, and that's a really, really great way to very quickly put that information in, and it kind of helps us track it and hold us accountable, too, because you can see when you put the information in, we respond to the requests. If there's questions that come up, we can post questions back to the resident. And I'd also encourage people to look at what our local media is doing as well. They do a pretty good job covering a lot of the things that go on in town, so we certainly hope there are a lot of ways that people can find out about what's going on in town. And again, and if there's suggestions about anything else, I think we're happy to consider anything.
Can I add something real quick?
Sure.
Probably members of the board don't know this, but Mr. Chandros was the one who brought the issue of the gas lamp outages to the public safety committee, so the genesis of the Light the Night Project Gaslight was initiated from him, so I do thank Mr. Chandros for that. And as an update, the event was held on April 3rd, and from what we understand from Mr. Grinchy is that they're at about 50% right now with public service, so 50% have been fixed, and we're getting ongoing updates from all the ones that they're getting fixed.
Thank you, trustee Cullen. At this time, I'd like to move on. We have one resolution for separate action.
Okay, resolution for separate action and public hearing, 2014-094, resolution rescinding resolution number 2013-233.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, could you just give a quick reader's digest version here?
Yeah, this'll also tie into what the next item on the agenda is as well. You'll recall, last year, actually, we had approved, decided at the recommendation of the architect to take advantage of pre-qualification procedures that are allowed under state law to pre-qualify contractors, this is for the Village Hall renovation project. We adopted certain regulations that required a certain amount of experience, which included a certain number of jobs over a certain dollar threshold within a certain period of time. We advertised, we held a public hearing, adopted those regulations, advertised, received a number of responses, but at the same time also, the architect received feedback from a number of contractors that he has worked with, or through his colleagues, knew to be very capable contractors who expressed concern that they were not eligible because the criteria, and specifically requiring two jobs over $5 million within the past five years, was sort of prohibitive because of the economy. It was a pretty consistent theme that many, many experienced and well-known contractors, simply because the economy had not had jobs that big. In order to ensure that we had the best, you know, potential pool and encourage competition, our architect did approach, the state got permission to have amended regulations, which is what the next item on the agenda is for, which would expand to a period of eight years, only require one $5 million job, and then there's a lower threshold for the second job, and there's other experiences that come into play. The belief is this will give us a better opportunity to have a larger pool of qualified applicants, which in the end, when we receive bids, should only enhance the competition and hopefully yield a better, you know, more advantageous bids for the village. So this particular resolution actually rescinds the original regulations, dispenses of those initial responses, and then the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to adopt those new modified regulations.
Which are the attachments to resolution 2014-097.
So are we doing 097 in the beginning as a public hearing going towards that?
Well, we're doing the public hearing on 097, which are the second...
Third resolution.
Yeah. 094 is rescinding the old ones. Down on the consent agenda, the third item is actually approving and adopting those regulations, but we are, the next item on the agenda is we're required to have a public hearing on those regulations, so that would be the next item.
Would you like me to move up the 097?
You could do on that 097. That might make sense, just move on it after the public hearing.
Okay. All right, thank you. So do I have a motion? Moved by trustee Levison.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Davis Ford. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you. So at this time, I would like to open the public hearing of the proposed revised bit of qualification regulations for the rehab of South Orange Village Hall. And if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak for this public hearing portion, please come forward at this time. Seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak on this public hearing, I'd like to close the public hearing and move on to the 2014-097. Have that resolution read by title, please.
97, you said? Okay. 2014-097, resolution for the revised pre-qualification regulations for the rehabilitation of South Orange Village Hall.
Thank you. Have a motion?
I move.
Moved by trustee Cullen. Seconded by trustee Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Next is the minutes.
I might ask, just for the record, if you can do a voice vote, because we actually have to send the resolution down to the state.
Oh, we do, okay. Yeah, so let's, okay, let's take a roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison? Did I hear a yes? Thank you. Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the minutes. We have the March 10th special meeting, March 10th conference meeting, and March 24th regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by trustee Rosner. Seconded by trustee Levison. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay. Ordinances for first reading.
2014-06, an ordinance to amend subsection 138-43C of the Code of the Township of South Orange Village to allow owners of restaurants that operate sidewalk cafes to leave tables and chairs on sidewalks when not open.
Thank you. This is come from a discussion that we had in our last board meetings, feedback from many business owners about the concerns they have about having to take their furniture in and out every day. I don't know, trustee Rosner, trustee Cullen, if there's anything that either of you, the planning and zoning, wanted to add about this? We discussed it pretty extensively last month, but...
Mr. President, perhaps it would be helpful to read section one, which actually describes what is now allowed. It's not too long, but it's kind of the genesis of why we're doing this.
Sure. Do you have a conferring?
I do. Do you want me to read it? Okay. "When a sidewalk cafe is not open, all tables and chairs and any other movable equipment left on the sidewalk shall be securely fastened to each other so as to not be readily moved to a location that is not licensed. Such furniture and equipment shall be secured with chain or cable and a locking device. Furniture and equipment may not be secured to the sidewalk, but may be secured to the building facade." So essentially, where we ended up last time was that we wanted to allow this, but also ensure that they were secured enough together, so that the public safety concerns from the police department, and also from our village engineer about things being moved...
But not bolted to the ground.
Yeah, exactly. And I did also receive feedback from the Village Center Alliance, and they were very supportive of the way that this was crafted.
Excellent. Anything else?
Well, my question was, did this go through planning and zoning, and I'm assuming this then...
Yes. We started with planning and zoning, and then we had a board discussion at the last meeting, and this is the result of the board discussion.
I'm also noticing that it is specifically licensed restaurants, so it's not any retail, because I know trustee Levison brought up a concern last meeting about how does this then roll out, and whether we will then have all retail, wanting to have some kind of a presence on the streets, and what shape does that take?
I guess, for the time being, if it's specifically licensed restaurants, it's sort of the most obvious benefactors of this, so makes sense.
Sure. To your point, and just to repeat of the last meeting, for this formal code review of all the stakeholders kind of reviewing everything that's on the books and eliminating things that may not make sense, we felt that displays for retail or service establishments would need to be done during that point in time, just because there's probably more parameters we'd want to put around what could be displayed. And so the intent is that moving forward, we want to address that provision, but we didn't want to stop this from moving forward, since it was something that we broadly had consensus and support to move forward with.
Okay. Got a motion? Comment?
This is for council. I'm assuming that by storing the furniture on the after hours, that the other parts of the code protect us for any violations?
Yes, yes, and not only that, but there's also an insurance requirement in the other sections that we may extend.
Thank you.
Okay. Got a motion?
Move.
Moved by trustee Rosner.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cullen. Do we have a roll, please?
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. 2014-07, an ordinance to temporarily suspend subsection 138-43A2 of the Code of the Township of South Orange Village through June 1st, 2014, waiving fees that owners of restaurants that operate sidewalk cafes are required to pay.
Thank you. So... So in the application for putting dining outside, there is an application fee currently. There was a recommendation that came, I don't know if it's, the genesis was the Village Center Alliance, but Bob Zuckman was here last time at least giving his feedback that business owners would be supportive of this, which is to be expected, to try and encourage more people. This came from the Irvington Ave Advisory Committee, and that more business owners would potentially apply for this, and we wanted to encourage business owners to do alfresco dining. And the ordinance is the legal mechanism that we need to do to allow that to happen, as we can't just allow people to not pay the fee that is required by the code. Is there anything, trustee Column, that you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I think that it was more just promotional in nature, because there's not a huge revenue source generated from this. So as a part of the campaign of making people invest in good sturdy furniture outdoors, we wanted to use this as kind of like a carrot to get people in early. That's why there's the timeline of right around Memorial Day, so it's more of an incentive.
And was one of the, one of the feedback items that you mentioned, that some of the business owners had given, was that once you actually start adding up some of the tables and chairs, it's not a totally insignificant expense for each business.
Yeah.
And that they wanted to invest in better furniture. But that also goes back to the early ordinance, which is that better furniture is heavier, and people didn't want to be dragging in iron tables every night, right?
Yeah, it's kind of like a package deal between these two. We think it's going to be the appropriate thing, and a measured response to try and encourage what we're trying to get out of the different restaurants.
It's great, it's great stuff. Thank you.
Is it, I guess one question is, do we have a mechanism in place for measuring success in the case of this? I mean, is it going to be anecdotal coming out of the Village Center Alliance?
I think we'll find out from the permits that are submitted, because everybody still has to go through the same process, and there has to be the authorization from our building department. So we'll see whether the numbers have increased as a result of the campaign, just by the permits we have on file.
Be nice to know what works or doesn't work.
I can say, just talking to some of the Irvington Avenue businesses, that a lot of them, and they don't have the sidewalks that are relatively large compared to the central business district, but a lot of them are talking about just kind of two chairs with like the single table along their wall, because there needs to be at least five feet between where the table ends and the curb starts. So I think we're going to see some of those come online shortly.
Great, great.
I do have a question administratively. How are we handling people who make an application today? Are we just holding the fees?
I would assume we could hold processing the application until the ordinance is finalized. If someone actually submits it.
I'd really want to take them immediately and then find out three weeks.
Correct.
Didn't have to pay, so we can just hold them. And, you know, I mean, with the board's consent, I would say, you know, we'll go ahead and process them and issue them. We don't want to hold them up from being able to do the application.
We want to send people to now apply for the permits, but we want, and we're going to hold on the fee.
Right.
That was the direction that we gave.
Yeah, we won't collect any fees.
Good.
I won't tell anyone if you don't.
But that's only through the end of May, though.
Just through June, I suppose.
Yeah.
So we have about a month.
They're going to apply now.
Yes.
I move.
All right, moved by trustee Rosner. Seconded by trustee Levison. Do we have the roll, please?
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Davis Ford?
I move that the ordinance 2014-06 and 2014-07 be scheduled for second reading and first passage on May 19th, 2014. Board meeting and a public hearing be held at that time for the reference ordinance. The village clerk is authorized to take the necessary actions to publish public notice for such hearing.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Davis Ford?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Column.
Hold on.
Was there a reason we chose the 19th, not the 12th? May 12th, or just make it sooner, and there's, I think, enough time.
We could. I guess maybe that was chosen because we weren't sure which one we were going to cancel, but we're not canceling the 19th, the 12th, so.
It was due to the publication timing. There's a cutoff with the local paper on Friday, so we missed the deadline.
Okay.
Okay, so the 19th.
So it's moved by trustee Davis Ford?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Column. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Let's move on to our consent agenda.
Okay, resolutions on consent agenda, 2014-095. Resolution hiring pool manager and assistant pool manager for the 2014 summer pool season. Resolution 2014-096, resolution of continuing support for the goals and purposes of the 2004 Highlands Water Protection and Planning Act. 2014-098, resolution affirming the township of South Orange Village's civil rights policy with respect to all officials, appointees, employees, prospective employees, volunteers, independent contractors, and members of the public that come into contact with municipal employees, officials, and volunteers. 2014-099, resolution appointing Melanie Troncone as village animal control officer. 2014-100, resolution affirming appointment of Stephen Hollow as full-time IT technician in the South Orange Department of Administration. 2014-101, resolution requesting the County of Essex to designate and paint crosswalks on Scotland Road in the township of South Orange Village.
Thank you. A couple of quick comments on consent agenda items. 2014-100, I hope we pass otherwise, our meeting's going to get turned off. But I'm very excited about this resolution. I don't know, Mr. Lewis, if there's anything that you want to just quickly add as far as the part-time and full-time transition for this.
Yeah, no, this is, and Mr. Hollow is obviously here tonight, has been with us part-time and largely working full-time due to the demands. As we've previously reported, and certainly trustee Levison has reported as well, our recent inter-local services contract with Maplewood has increased the workload and in turn increased the revenue. We're three, now almost four months in, and way ahead of the minimums that we anticipated. So this is, you know, this is budget neutral in the sense that the additional costs are more than offset by the additional revenues received from Maplewood. And this will allow us, you know, one of the things we had encountered was the demands at Maplewood, while great and providing us additional revenue, we're also taking away staffing to attend to our IT needs. So this will bring us up to a full complement and allow, you know, us to continue to provide to Maplewood, generating, you know, significant revenues, and at the same time, make sure that we're addressing all our needs in a timely fashion.
Thank you. And just quickly, the feedback as far as our, I mean, we've discussed this a couple of times here before, but the feedback as far as the services that we've been providing to Maplewood have been fairly overwhelmingly positive and satisfactory. Is that correct?
Yeah, very positive. We actually had a, sort of like a first quarterly meeting with my counterpart, Mr. Manning, Deputy Learner's counterpart, Caesar, and they were incredibly positive. And what was interesting, because they were in a position to compare it to the previous service they were provided by Rutgers, and it was, they were glowing in their recommendations. So that's credit to Stan Wilkinson, Mr. Hollow, Ray Cabrera, our whole IT department. So it's very positive.
Thank you. Sorry, trustee Clark, did you have a question?
No, just wanted to make sure that this will continue to cover late-night board of trustee meetings.
It does.
And then quickly, 2014-101 is, the county has asked us to do this, for them to move forward, and I don't know, trustee Clark, if there was anything, or trustee Schnall, so a few folks have been working on this. If you have any other sort of further comments on this, we went back a little bit over some versions of some of the correspondence back and forth between us and Essex County about making sure that all of the crosswalks that are on Scotland are added. The point of this was way back when we passed a Scotland Road pedestrian traffic safety plan. Part of the idea was to not only make crosswalks so that people could have the right-of-way across the street, which is obviously very important, but also to create a little bit of a different look on Scotland Road, in that right now, you know, once you kind of come around that curve, if you're coming from South Orange Ave, you kind of get to straightaway, and it doesn't really, necessarily, the road itself doesn't really look like a residential road, and it very much isn't a residential neighborhood. So part of the idea is that by painting more crosswalks on there, and some of the other signage, and some of the other things that we've discussed about beautifying the area, the idea is to try and change the way the environment looks, which would ideally slow people down a little bit, and that's a pretty commonly used and effective, you know, traffic calming measure. I will just say one very, very quick thing, something that I didn't mention in the last meeting, but very interesting, and I should send some pictures around to you guys, but in Ireland, their traffic calming measures are incredibly aggressive and overt, so the speed limits tend to be, seem to be a little bit higher as you're driving between towns. But when you start to actually get to a town, they have gigantic signs that say traffic calming measures ahead, you know, on every side of the road as you're approaching, and you can see large cement barriers basically narrow the lanes down pretty significantly as you start to get closer to the road. And not only do they have flashing speed limit signs and all these different things, one of the things they actually, almost all the towns seemed to list, was how many people had, how many fatalities on that road there were the previous year. And it was like very out there that, you know, kind of in between these towns where there's no residences, you're driving the way you're driving, but once you get into a town where there's people walking around, like, you know, there's no messing around, and we really need people to slow down and be aware of that. So the environment, there wasn't a lot of police enforcement, but the environmental factors seemed to get people to actually, and people seemed to follow it. So hopefully, these are a couple steps that we can take, as there's really no indication on the road itself, or not many indications, other than some resident efforts of making it seem more residential, to make it look more residential. So hopefully, this is a step in that direction.
Yeah, just to quickly, this is hopefully just the first of several steps we'll be able to take. And I want to again thank trustee Davis Ford for her help in working with the county, and trustees Levison and Column for backing the effort and some help on moving these agenda items forward. And I hope we can get them in place and frankly see some success there in a calmer neighborhood for the residents of Scotland Road.
Thanks.
And the West Montrose Neighborhood Association, trustee Clark did a great job of updating them on a series of different things that came from the original plan that has been worked on right now. So hopefully, we're doing a good job keeping them posted.
Great. Other questions or comments and other consent agenda items?
I move the consent agenda.
Okay. So that would be everything, just in case people do have an agenda, minus 097, which you already voted on.
Yes.
So that's a motion by trustee Column and seconded by trustee Levison. Do we have the roll, please?
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of bills?
Yes, I move the bills list, which previously was the list that distributed to the board of trustees for examination.
Okay, moved by trustee Levison.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Davis Ford. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? What's that?
Do we need a roll?
Why are you trying to do a roll? Yeah, why don't we do a roll call vote?
Certainly. Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments. If there's any member of the public who wants to speak, please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Arrington. I'm a longtime resident of South Orange. Good evening, Mayor Alex P. Torpey, trustees Robo Castle, dictator. We're going to play school tonight. I am the teacher, and you are the student, and you're going to listen. Now, we're going to talk about two issues concerning Irvington Ave. The first is condemnation. We, what is condemnation? It's the act of study, condemning, taking away residents' parcels of land. We have residents who have lived in South Orange all their lives, between 10 and 50 years. Why take away their, parts of their house? The other issue is condom, which meant to be judged or performed to be unfit for the use or service of. Why? Residents have been here all the lives. Aren't they entitled to stay there? I think the residents of Irvington Ave have a voice to be heard.
Okay, thank you. So anybody else who wants to speak? Okay, at this time, I'd like to close public comments, unless there's any new business. Is there a motion to?
I'd just like to get a sense of members of the board, if they would be interested in me pursuing, having our legal counsel put together a resolution supporting that all the major telecommunications companies that produce and sell smartphones, and also the providers, be involved in a kill switch on our smartphones and mobile phones. In talking with our police chief, a large percentage of the robberies that happen are individuals who are wanting to get the smartphone, and unfortunately, they can go to any bodega or any other place and get it swiped, and the phones are usable. This drives new sales for the makers of the phones, and also new business for the providers. And I recently pulled something, an article that said last year, more than 3 million people had their smartphones stolen. And it's just a simple solution, it's not rocket science, that would drastically reduce this type of crime that could end in physical harm as well. And it's a large percentage of the type of robberies that are happening in our communities. I did pull up a resolution that failed, that was drawn up in California, and, but if we could somehow modify that and pass a resolution in this board, and then send it to our, the county and other municipalities and counties, and ask them to weigh in, and also advocate at the state level, perhaps we can initiate something in this area. I think it's very simple, and it's a huge, huge area of public safety that we can have some sort of ability to effect change. So I just want to get your sense of what you think about that? If it's something that you would be interested in us moving forward on?
I have no problem embracing it. It's more along the lines that we'd have to get the US senators and congresspeople behind it. They know they've been working on it similar in New York. So I would reach out to, with someone in King and JC, and find out if they already have anything on the subject, and more than that, so we have something that matches up that they already have.
Okay. So Steve, would you be able to help me in that area?
I will.
And I think the action would be to frame our resolution around if something does exist, and then to really be a catalyst for all the municipalities to do the same, so we can get that critical mass and put some, hopefully some pressure that will affect change.
Thank you. Trustee Column, will the Public Safety Committee be meeting before our next board meeting?
Yes. Well, no, no, wait. No, we will not. Our next one is on May 22nd.
I would love to get our chief's input as well, and just, you know.
I was thinking the same thing.
Is that okay, trustee Davis Ford?
Can we bring this?
If we do it, maybe not the next meeting, which is a conference agenda anyway, but the next regular meeting?
Oh, absolutely.
And then we can run it by the Public Safety Committee.
I'd love to, let me know if it's on that, on that agenda, and I'd love to be at that meeting.
That would be great.
Great.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, just to add one thing. Ms. Arrington, thank you very much for your comments, but I feel compelled to respond for the benefit of the board of trustees as well. At the last Irvington Ave Corridor Advisory Committee, we invited our village planner, Susan Gruel, to come talk about redevelopment options that a municipality may be interested in.